All right, looks like we are streaming. And recording.
Okay, we're live.
Very cool. All right, perfect. Well, then I'm going to call this meeting to order at 5:02 PM. Thank you to everybody who's joining us. We will actually call the roll real quickly here at the beginning. And then, as you guys can see on the agenda, we'll recess into our closed session. So trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
And I'm here as well. Trustee Consents her regrets she's unable to join us tonight, but she did send me some reports for later on in our agenda. I have received to date no public comment pertaining to our closed session item. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and recess this meeting and we'll go on to that other link that you have in your email to go into our closed session. And then when we finish that, we'll come back to this link to resume our open session. So with that, to call us into a recess for closed session at 5:03 PM. All right, it looks like we are all back from closed session. So I will call us back into open session at 5:29 PM. A whole minute ahead of when we scheduled. So, you know, just save it time all over the place. We've already called to order and taken our roll call. I'll note again for the record that trustee Con can't be with us tonight and sends her regrets. And if I could just have all the trustees go ahead and switch their cameras on and everybody else. Go ahead and keep your cameras off until your part comes up. All right. So here we are back in open session. So at this point, we'll come to our approval of the agenda. So if I could ask for a motion to approve and adapt the agenda, please.
I move that we pre-prove and adopt the agenda.
Okay. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Perfect. Okay, before we vote, any items need to be reordered or amended or changed before we adopt the agenda as it appears in your board package? Nope. Okay, great. Then we'll take a roll call vote as we will for all of our votes tonight. So when I call your name, just go ahead and reply with your vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me. So the agenda is adapted as it appears. We have an opportunity for public comment on any non-agenda items. I will say at this point that I have not received any public comment. As has been our practice, if we get public comment later on in the meeting, we can always take it then, even if it's from a slightly different time. So we will move forward then to our special presentation. Item 3E. Nikki, do you want to do a very quick introduction to who we'll be hearing from?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So as as we have discussed many times in the past, we have our painting that needs art restoration. We put out an RFP for proposals to do the art conservation back in, I think it was February, and we extended the deadline so that It closed on June the 26th, and we had two respondents, Camila Corbella and Linnea Saunders, both of which have been invited tonight, and I see Linnea has just jumped in, okay, to present their proposals to the board, and I'm hoping that the board have a chance to look over those. So if you have any questions for them about their proposals, you'll be able to ask those at this time. And then it is later on the new business to vote for one of those two. Camila, I see that she was already in. Did you want to go ahead and start?
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
I hope everybody's doing well. So my name is Camila Corbella, and I'm the principal conservator and founder of LA Art Labs. Just to introduce myself and my company real quick. We have been in existence since February of last year, and I basically transitioned from a museum background to private practice. And I have been treating paintings and sculptures for 15 years, and most of the time actually in museum environments. So I basically transitioned from lacquer straight directly into having my own business. And I actually prepared a little bit of a presentation about my proposed treatment, and I would like to just share my screen in order for you to better understand my reasoning behind the proposed treatment.
That's great. Go ahead.
Okay. There we go. Okay, are you able to see my screen now? Yeah. Okay. So my treatment is different in nature from the treatment that my very respected colleague Linnea actually suggested. What I am striving for is basically two things. For once, the stabilization of the artwork itself, and then also achieving a final appearance that is consistent over the whole artwork, and also consistent with the time when it was actually painted. All the positions that I included into my treatment proposal can be broken down in 17 steps, and I will only explain the more involved ones. So of course, everything starts with packing and transport, and then goes over into photography in high resolution, and this is done throughout the process, and then some conservation steps like removal and encapsulation of labels happens, as well as the un-framing of the painting. And then we basically go over into the conservation aspect of the treatment, which is the consolidation. And there are a couple of local areas that are in need of consolidation as there is lifting paint. There has been some flaking, and that culminated already in losses, but it is very localized. So it's not an overall structural issue. It's just sporadic occurrence, which can be treated very nicely and locally. So then the next step is basically the surface cleaning, which is a more involved procedure. And this is an example of another impressionist, Californian impressionist painting here in the picture, where the removal of the surface dirt and grime actually makes such an incredible difference. So proposed is to surface clean the painting first by removing dust and dirt, and then go over to further removal of dirt that is ingrained and embedded into the surface of the varnish. And this is happening with an aqueous cleaning solution that is adjusted to pH conductivity, surfactant circulation, and all this quality. And this is actually a procedure that is rather cutting edge, if you want, so as you really select a cleaning solution that is adjusted to the problem and dirt that is present at hand. So I think it will make actually quite a difference. So another aspect is the tears in the canvas. Those have been already previously addressed with patches in some areas, and there is one tear that has not been addressed yet, that is newer. And it is proposed to remove the canvas patches, and here you see like some examples of canvas patches that were removed, and because the adhesive that has been previously used in order to adhere the patches has kind of like gone into the canvas itself. So the removal of the patches is not just removing them, but also removing the adhesive residues from the actual canvas structure, which is usually achieved with gels or some poltuses. And it's very much dependent on the nature of the adhesive, and then there is like a vaxi. The surface appears vaxi, which means that you're gonna need to go in with some hydrocarbonates, but yeah, basically the process of that, and then I propose to repair the tears again. So I'm not using patches as have been used previously, because those are really thick. And if you apply this thick patches with this adhesive and the wax inclusions, what the painting structure is doing over time is you can see along the edges that this will result in planetar, planetar deformations in the painting itself. So you will have undulations, but also you cannot kind of see the edges of the patch, just like an imprint almost. So we want to avoid that, because this will then cause further structural issues. So removing those and replacing the patch with a support system that is basically made out of Japanese tissue that is extremely long fiber and extremely stable. You cannot tear it with your hands. And a conservation grade adhesive that is appropriate for the canvas is very crucial. The materials used for this are sympathetic to the canvas itself, so it will not interfere too much with the dimensional response of the canvas to changes in humidity and temperature. What I'm not proposing is the fret by fret tear repair. And so here are examples of tear pairs where every single thread was aligned and then properly joined. And I think the canvas at hand is too brittle and has too much of a history, that this is not a preferred technique here, because this is usually used to reinstate the integrity of the canvas when the canvas is relatively unaffected and guarantees the dimensional response without any changes in pull or dynamics within the canvas. So this doesn't apply here, because the nature of the canvas as it is now is rather unresponsive because of its aging, and because certain certain adhesives were already introduced into the canvas. And you can see those adhesives that have been introduced into the canvas, even though they were not supposed to necessarily be there, and this can be varnish residues, but also from previous consolidations. This is actually a picture of the painting itself, and the darker areas is where the adhesive/varnish has penetrated the canvas and has already irreversibly changed the nature of the canvas itself. So it will not respond like a normal flexible canvas anymore, which is why a fret by fret tear repair, I would highly recommend not to do that, because it's also very cost intensive. It's labor intense. It takes a long time. I've been doing this for 15 years, but in some instances, it's just not a good solution. Another thing that I'm proposing in order to regain structural stability and actually be able to stretch the canvas properly onto its support system is the etch lining. And so this example here is a little bit more exaggerated than the painting that you have. So this Baroque painting basically had like really torn edges, and the etch lining was a really good candidate in this case, but also for our painting, because you have really little areas to work with to properly stretch the painting onto its support system. And so an etch lining basically looks like that. You have strips of canvas that are attached to the sides of the painting. The canvas strips are prepared in a specific way. So here I'm basically removing the bulk of the canvas threads, of the strips that are to be attached in order to have a smooth transition and for them not to show as the painting ages. And then the final product basically looks like that. So the edges are smoothed out, and every single second and third fret or so are removed, dependent on the density of your, of your actually original canvas. So it's a very custom approach. I'm also proposing local impainting to adjust re-taches and impainting that is there. This is accompanied by the very selective removal of impainting that has been there before, but without removing the varnish. So it's more of a compromise in between removing as much as needed in order to improve the visual appearance, because a lot of the of the re-taches that are pre-existing are actually somewhat working, and we can adjust them in order to improve the readability in those areas that are affected noticeably along the bottom edge, and then in the top right, and then some scattered areas as well. So in this instance here, this was a treatment where two areas have been locally reworked in order to gain like a, you know, perfect surface that fits into the entire design. And it was also, in this case, a very local treatment. So I didn't have to like remove the entire varnish from this painting and go into like depths, but was just locally addressing those areas that were aesthetically not pleasing, and that were deviating from the actual design that the artist executed. And I'm just going to explain to you why I don't think that a varnish removal at this point in time is necessary either. So a varnish removal is usually done when you have a painting that does not have its optical properties anymore. So varnishes, they yellow. So in this case, this is an example of a yellowed varnish, and I'll remove the varnish. So you see like the tonality of the painting has considerably changed. But the varnish that we have is basically, it's dull, it's thick, it's hardly soluble, but it also fulfills its protectional purpose, and then also its visual purpose. So you have actually saturation, you have, you see everything that you need to see. The only problem with it is that it's rather dull, but that can also be addressed with local re-varnishing. So you basically add varnish, a tub of what there is, but not overall and not thickly, like you basically use a tampon and then, as necessary, work it into the surface to regain saturation. So this is, this is the painting we are talking about. And you see in the very, in the very center that there are some areas where the varnish is like almost duller and a little bit grayish. So those are very, very small areas that are affected by the varnish, like slightly being inconsistent, and perhaps even lifting off the paint. But this is also, again, very local and can easily be addressed by the local varnishing that I was talking about previously. When we remove a varnish, generally speaking, this is one of the more difficult tasks in paintings conservation, but it is also very wearing. So now we have a varnish that's very hardly, hard to solubilize, and it fulfills still like all its needs, visual and protection. To just like break it down real quick. And I think it can really beautifully be improved, and we don't have to stress the paint layers further. And I would estimate the varnish to actually have a lifespan of maybe 50 years or so. This is like really a ballpark, and you cannot tell, for one, what really the varnish is without doing sophisticated analysis, but you also cannot really determine how it will develop over the span of the next decades, let's say. But it looks structurally that integral that it should be actually, should not change significantly over the next decade. So I think, yeah, it's just not necessary, and I would suspect the painting, if you were to remove the varnish, to a lot of stress that could be avoided for now. Then I was also proposing to basically save the stretcher and the frame as well, just because I thought it works. The stretcher specifically, now this one has some historic significance. It may not be the original stretcher, but it has, it seems that it has been an ensemble with the painting for a longer time, and I have just like, there is a tendency to see paintings, their stretchers, specifically as more of a unit, and stretches like that can really beautifully be modified in order to accommodate the painting better, to make them structurally more sound. Little lips can be applied in order to, you know, make them like retrofit them accordingly, or there are a couple of ways how to, how to improve the structural integrity. It doesn't have to look like this. This is just one example. Because in this instance, I think preserving the patent stretcher that has been predominantly around at the end of the 19th, at the beginning of the 20th century, is actually a beautiful part of the journey of the painting itself. So that would be the main aspects that I wanted to talk about regarding the treatment, and then about the display and recommendations regarding that. There are a couple of things that, that one can generally speaking do for a painting and its longevity, and also the longevity. and its longevity and also the longevity of conservation measures. And one of the most important things is um for display or storage to actually attach a backing board and um also attach it securely to the wall with also earthquake safe um hanging hardware. Um, glazing is an option that could be considered in any in any uh situation, but it's oftentimes when when there are, for instance, curators or just the owners or whoever is a stakeholder, um, that it's aesthetically not very pleasing and rather intrusive. So this is really a a preference. Um, given the location in the library where it is currently, um, you don't have direct sunlight hitting the the painting surface. You also have quite a bit of um air circulation. When I was there, I felt like um there was sufficient. Um, and what is more important than actually doing the whole glazing, which might not correspond with everybody's aesthetics, is to actually have the painting on a very regular um dusting schedule. Sounds very simple and trivial, but um that's what a lot of uh even institutions fail with. Um, cause yeah, that that means maintenance. Um, and I think, there was it.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Camilla. We really appreciate it. Um, I think it might be helpful um and for it, I'll defer to what you guys would prefer to move directly into Linnea's presentation and then questions at the end um for both, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Um, then Camilla, if you'll stay with us um and just go ahead and switch your camera and your sound off and we'll bring you back in just a minute after we've heard from Linnea.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Linnea, you're up. And I think, oh, yep, perfect. There we go. We've got your sound from you.
Okay. Do you see the, okay, good. My first time on a PowerPoint via Zoom. Um, okay, yeah. So, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about this um treatment um proposal. Um, I just wanted to first acknowledge um just an awareness of the subject matter. And as someone keen on local history and with what I always refer to as an alternate career in libraries and book selling, I would be very happy to work with you on this project. Um, I want to thank Camilla for her very thorough kind of analysis of of different approaches we take in conservation. And I think that her approach to treatment is very similar to the proposal that I provided in two thousand nineteen. Um, and just, um, this is simply a a slide outlining um that I finished my graduate degree in conservation in nineteen ninety-nine. So it's been quite a while now. And I worked um in museums for eight years before establishing my business in two thousand seven. And um coincidentally, I'll actually be moving to Altadena next week, um, a new studio um over on Woodbury, kind of near JPL. So that would be convenient for um consultation with you during the project. Um, and I continue working for a number of museums, most notably the Huntington Art Museum, where I worked on contracts since two thousand eight. Um, so just briefly, my talk will consist of describing the construction condition and past treatment of the painting and then two levels of treatment. Um, I'm just sharing both the two thousand nineteen proposal and the two thousand twenty proposal and then a discussion of the budget, just to kind of clarify um where the costs come. So in starting actually on the reverse of the painting, um, so it's painted on canvas, secured to a stretcher. And these are called shattuck keys, um, named after an artist um who patented them in eighteen eighty-three. So it's possible that this is, this outer portion of the stretcher is the original stretcher. But one issue that we've had with these shattuck key stretchers is that they actually don't hold tension well. And you can see by this gap that this stretcher is overextended. And part of the problem with the painting is that the canvas is sagging, it has many draws, and the stretcher isn't supporting it well or tensioning it well. So, um, and I just also point out that this is a later addition. It would be interesting to research that idea. Um, again, you have it hanging from a wire on two hooks above the the children's area. And so that's problematic in terms of, it's difficult in terms of handling and the back is exposed. So these areas where the white patches are, are the prior repairs of tears and tears have happened subsequently to that treatment. Um, so, yeah. And so then the painting itself. So the paint layer is very fluid in application and there are minimal visible losses. There, the losses are primarily associated with the small tears, oops, such as this one here, which is up here. And here's, of course, the train. Um, and then um here you have cracks that are developing. The nice thing about the, these are mechanical cracks and they are stable. So there's no need to address consolidation issues with those. Um, but you're also notice that there are these draws. Um, you can kind of see the rippling here. And so the surface crime kind of collects on the surface in these areas. Um, so there is an overall varnish and that varnish is not immediately soluble and is suspected to be a polyurethane or another non-traditional paint varnish. So I tested solvents including xylene, isopropyl, ethanol and acetone, and none showed any effect on the varnish. The painting was treated at least once. Um, and it's at that time that that the tears were done, the tears were repaired um and the varnish applied. But also, um, you can see in this corner, this kind of greenish layer here, that appears to be a repainting of the area that covers up losses. Again, down in this corner, you can see my arrow, can you? Yeah, okay. In this corner, um, there is repainting. Um, so this area, there are ridges and areas of delamination. So I really think what happened was when the person that treated this last removed the natural resin varnish and repaired the tears around the edges where there was lifting paint and flanking, they applied paint over to consolidate and fill and reintegrate rather than what we do now, which is more localized consolidation, localized fill and localized impainting. Um, and to my mind, um, I would say that this painting would have much greater depth and um clarity of the original colors if this varnish is removed. Um, and here again in the corner, you'll see um this kind of thick application of repainting in that area. Here is an area of loss along here, along here, along here. So, um, yeah, I I don't remember if I said this, but it's likely that an artist rather than a conservator completed this treatment. And it's the choice of the materials using the polyurethane varnish, um, repainting rather than consolidating and locally impainting that contributes to the expense of a full conservation treatment. And I'll also note that the frame, um, it also has a lot of scratches and damages. So um, it's, you know, another aspect that would have to be addressed if um if you continue to use this frame. My concern about the frame is that it's very restrictive on the stretcher. Now the stretcher doesn't fit the canvas. So once we either modify the stretcher to fit the canvas, will we be able to put it back in this particular frame? So, yeah, I had um initially submitted a proposal in two thousand nineteen, which was intended to initiate a dialogue with the library about how this project could go. And it offered various options along the way. Um, it outlined a structural intervention and minimal aesthetic intervention. So I consider only addressing the losses in painting locally, varnishing locally. That's um, you know, maybe an intermediate approach to treatment. Um, that proposal also addressed the lack of tension of plenary, consolidating, filling in impainting losses and possible reuse of existing stretcher, but also being concerned that it would not adequately fit in um, would not adequately tension the canvas or adequately fit in the existing frame. So the June twenty twenty proposal provided a full comprehensive treatment, including structural work and full cleaning of the non-original varnish and recognizing that it's twenty-five square feet, which is quite an area to address. Um, and part of the reason I presented a full proposal is just discussions that I'd had last fall with Cindy Cury and then again with Nikki, she had asked about um ways of installing and protective measures for installing. So I thought it best prepare the proposal that outlines the full treatment, including safe packing and transport, as well as secure installation of the painting. And depending on budgeting, this proposal can be modified to address um what the library stakeholders decide are their priorities for the project. So, um, the structural intervention is actually very similar to the two thousand nineteen proposal. Um, but because the varnish is likely a polyurethane, it will be time intensive to remove. And in addition, with the overpaints that are present, um, that are either acrylic or oil, I don't really know at this point. Um, those appear to co- cover areas of lifting paint and loss. And therefore, that's an additional time intensive um step that was not included in the first proposal. And once in the studio, these aspects can be evaluated in detail and discussed with library stakeholders. So as far as the budget, um, yeah, so the idea is twenty-five square feet, which is a lot. Um, I also, um, you know, my estimate reflects all of the time that I anticipate spending on the project, including preparation of the strip lining, the loose lining that I suggested. Um, so that accounts for the difference in hours as well as um between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand twenty, it's just we don't know how long it will take to remove the polyurethane varnish and the overpaint. So in providing a broader um cost in the outset, I feel more comfortable rather than coming back later and say, well, actually, this is going to take a lot longer than I anticipated. So, um, and I also included additional measures to support the canvas in the two thousand twenty proposal. Um, so including a loose lining, which is a fabric that's secured over the stretcher before you secure the edge lines um painting. And so you'll see that there are seven additional steps compared to the two thousand nineteen proposal. And other steps end up being more time intensive, such as documentation. So I recently treated a painting that was photographed at ten different stages of its project, which ends up, you know, being a significant amount of time in the end. Um, I also budgeted for a professional art installation team. Um, I think that's really important for the return because they would be able to provide the appropriate anchors for securing the painting in the wall, whether you choose to return it to its original place or to place it in the concrete block wall to the right at the top of the stairs. Um, and I also suggested using um the non-reflective plexi as a protection. Obviously, tears have happened over time. We don't know the reason for those tears, um, whether it's been de-installation, storage, that type of thing. But it will um both protect the painting from impact damage as well as um limit surface crime pickup and help with the um the general microclimate. Um, the backing board on the reverse and the plexi on the front help mitigate any changes in relative humidity. Um, the problem with adding the plexi is that the current frame isn't deep enough to accommodate adding that. Um, it's a very shallow frame. So that's another aspect that's not included in this proposal. So I provided an estimate for a new stretcher and then the cost of the plexiglass and then additional materials. Um, and that last line is just a guesstimate because I know that the linen is at least fifty dollars a yard. So, um, so, and the project can be completed in stages. Once unframing and surface cleaning is complete, we have a much better sense of the extent of the overpaint. The solubility testing can be done to evaluate a timeframe for varnish removal, should you decide to go forward with that aspect. Um, and and one of the reasons I'm suggesting this full treatment as an option is I I do feel that it will be a much stronger painting. I feel the polyurethane is flattening and deadening it, deadening it, and you don't get the depths that you you would have originally. Um, and I also find that very often when a project like this is undertaken, if possible, it's best to address all of the issues. Um, as it would like, it would likely be that a full treatment um would not be considered again um for several decades. So thinking about this as the opportunity to do the full treatment of the painting. So, yeah, I thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you and I look forward to your questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, Camilla, let's have you come back as well. Perfect. All right. So um, I know I have a number of questions, but I'll open it up first for uh the board. So questions for either Camilla or Linnea individually or general questions that we'd like to hear from both of them on.
Well, this is Terry and I had a question for Linnea about the timeline. You had a six-month timeline, Linnea, to do this?
Roughly. It 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 depends on, um, I mean, I would like to know what your schedule is and it depends also what else I have in the studio, but roughly a six-month timeline.
And my understanding is that the big difference between your proposal and Camilla's is that that varnish removal, that polyurethane removal.
Yeah.
And your proposal, you you're you're, I think you're you're certain that it will add more depth and more nuance to the painting to get rid of that surface and re redo it with another surface. And and the reason that it costs so much is simply the time it takes to do that. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Camilla, a question for you real quick and kind of the same thing. How how long, I didn't, I might have missed it, but I did not see what the estimated timeframe was for your restoration.
Uh, yeah, I mean, given that it's uh not that in-depth and um like as as Lydia said, like the the varnish removal that is not included in my estimate, um, it's rather quick and turnaround time from scheduling of um the pickup basically would be about a month.
Okay. And in both cases, I'll talk, I'll give this question to both of you. Are you both doing the work yourselves or do you have a Or do you have a premises that help you out? How's that work?
Yeah. So, I'm doing the work myself. I do have assistants that help me with certain things. Like, I don't prepare, for instance, the strip lining myself because this is like very, you know, mechanic way where the, the strip line can be easily prepared by actually anybody, just like according to my instructions. Yeah.
Yeah. I also have, I have an assistant part-time. I would be doing the majority of the work, particularly the cleaning. And then, you know, I always choose tasks for the assistant to do based on the, the painting itself, the specific task, the, the experience and skill set of the assistant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Other questions?
This is Jason. I guess my question on the varnish or not to varnish issue, is that purely an aesthetic question? Or is there also an issue, does it affect, I guess, the lifetime durability of, of the piece as well? Removing versus not removing the varnish?
So, I think that after examining the, the varnish, it, it doesn't appear to have adverse effect on the paint layer itself. I have seen, I have shown you in one of the slides, this one like area where there was a little bit of blurriness in the, in the middle of the picture. It's barely noticeable just because of the painting technique. But this is where the varnish very locally actually lacks adhesion to the surface, which can happen locally. It's not that big of a deal, and that can easily be resaturated. But I would like to also add to this in terms of varnish removal, yes or no? Oftentimes, first of all, it helps if you actually remove the varnish in just like a trial area and see really how much it visually impairs the, the, the design, which I think is actually not given hence my proposal. But it's also, so not posing a risk on, on the paint layer because oftentimes you see some, some varnishes, they build tension, and then they basically lift the paint layer with the tension that the varnish builds up over time. And you have like areas of insecurity that goes down to your paint layer and your ground layer. And that's the varnishes that are considered to be very problematic because it endangers your, your paint surface. We can't really tell what the varnish is because you really need sophisticated analysis in order to determine the actual synthetic resin. It looks like a very coherent film that it currently builds. And I think that like the depth that it lacks right now can, and this is something that we do a lot in, at museums, can really nicely be with local revarnishing be improved. The other thing is, the longer you wait with a lot of the synthetic resin varnishes, the more the polymers are being broken down monomers, and the easier it is then to remove, which is like an equation that applies for a lot of varnishes. More varnish it, and it doesn't apply. It always depends on, you know, the structure of your, of your resin. But given that, that the, the, the chains that are like, kind of like the polymer chains of the varnish that are now relatively well cross-linked, hence the insolubility of the material will just like break over time in certain areas just due to like oxidation. For instance, it will eventually be easier to remove. And then you can use not as strong solvents. And you kind of have this notion of some paintings conservation that, you know, the stronger the solvents you use, it's like what you don't want to expose yourself to, you don't want to expose the painting to because it's, you know, toxic and impairing to a certain degree, the paint surface also, or like the underlying layers within the painting's latest stratigraphy.
Yeah. I guess I would say, I think it's a really, you know, very detailed and lovely explanation of, of certain aspects of, of varnish chemistry. I mean, I've encountered several paintings in my private practice that do have a polyurethane varnish on it. And I don't take samples and have them analyzed. I, I, there are certain solutions that are used typically for removal of polyurethane varnish. And so, you can test those and empirically deduce that this is likely a polyurethane varnish. And this approach to cleaning seems effective and safe for cleaning this particular painting. Unfortunately, I didn't bring that with me. I brought a small kit of solvents with me in testing the varnish. So, but I would say there's, you know, characteristics of it just really instinctively make me believe it to be a polyurethane varnish. And as far as like the, the idea of varnish is shearing off or becoming more easily soluble with time, that may be the case for some, but that doesn't really address the idea of, do you want this painting to look its best now? Is this your moment for taking the time and effort to present this painting in its best light? And so, that's part of the reason my second proposal goes into a more detailed and thorough treatment. It is perfectly acceptable not to do that full treatment. And I'm happy to do the initial treatment as proposed in 2019 and do testing to evaluate the varnish and have discussions with you about what the improvement will be. But I do think, in the same way that Camilla showed a cleaning slide that showed grime removal on one side and the dramatic difference, I do think in this case, it will be dramatic, and it will be a great improvement. You'll get the depth. Once it's varnished again with the, an appropriate varnish for a painting, you'll get a depth in the dark colors. You'll get the recession of space. And we'd be able to address the underlying flaking issues that the overpaint is obscuring. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other, other questions? Camilla, anything that you'd like to pose to either of our?
No. I think my question was similar to Jason's in terms of Linnea, when you say that it's worth it to kind of do a nicer, you know, more thorough job now in order to, you know, make sure the longevity of the, the painting is secure. And I'm, I was wondering if that was includes, like, the, the varnish is the issue in terms of like that is going to maintain the longevity of the painting?
Um, well, I mean, there's, the idea, I mean, the varnish is going to improve the appearance of the painting and bring it back to, closer to what it looked like originally. A varnish does provide a protective aspect as well. But it's primarily artists apply a varnish to saturate the paints and create an overall kind of uniformity to the surface. As far as like the long-term preservation of the painting, that is more addressing the areas of flaking, making sure it's tensioned properly, and making sure the backing board, since you have the issues with the tears occurring, and making sure it's well-secured. So, yeah. So, it's, it's more those issues are addressing the structural stability and long-term preservation, whereas the varnish removal is aesthetic and allowing you to access the areas of lifting paint that are underneath.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. A couple of quick questions for me, and I'll try to be quick about this because I know we've got lots of other stuff to get to tonight, and I appreciate your guys' time. So, first, Camilla, is there any? I was really interested in your suggestion of using Japanese tissue as, as an option. Is there any impact in terms of surface tension or stretch or any sort of structural and mechanical issues associated with using that versus canvas?
Yeah. So, you must understand that the canvas that you have is not like, you know, a newer canvas that is like hyper-responsive to like fluctuation and humidity and, and temperature. So, it will not just like respond in this crazy way, but since it's all there and it already like has lost its initial responsiveness, and there is all this other stuff in the, in the canvas itself, it already like has altered mechanics. So, given all those aspects, I think having the Japanese tissues will not considerably interfere with the current mechanics of the, of the canvas. And it's so incredibly thin and stable that it will not show on the surface. Like, oftentimes, you have the thick canvas patches, and you really can see like the edges of the, of the patch showing on the front side, causing deformations in the paint layers. And this is basically something that you have not given with, with the Japanese tissue. I think it's, you know, there is a, there is a method for, for everything. And I outlined like the difference in between the tier, the thread-by-thread method and the patching. In this instance, it's basically improving the patching, but not like going all into a thread-by-thread repair, which is super labor-intensive. And it just like, doesn't really, it, it's like an over, overkill for, for what the canvas is and what it's mechanically capable of.
Great.
Yeah. Can I just, I'll just jump in?
Okay.
I also propose the, essentially mine is a modification of the thread-by-thread terry pair and the thin patches of Japanese tissue. So, it's just very similar. Like, the new tear could very easily, you do thread-by-thread, and then a final reinforcement with the Japanese tissue. And the same thing around the edges, if there are any tears at the fold-over edges. So, it's, it's essentially the same proposal in that sense.
I'm gonna just ask you guys to boil this down for me and make sure that we're understanding this issue because, you know, the four of us, not painting restoration and conservation experts, sure are not, but we're gonna make a decision on this anyway. So, am I correct in believing that the big difference between the two proposals is essentially whether we remove the varnish or not?
Yeah. My 2019 proposal is very similar to Camilla's proposal.
Okay.
I just expanded on it based on the discussions I was having.
Yeah.
And the questions I was asked.
No, I got you. I got you. I just want to make sure that there aren't other major elements that were not.
I mean, I could modify it and bring it back. Or, you know, you can choose to do it in stages. So, if you want to do the 2019 proposal, reevaluate and continue with varnish removal, that's certainly a discussion that we can have.
I saw on one of the slides, there was some question about whether or not the polyurethane varnish is original or not. Is there indeed debate about that? Is it definitely something that was later?
It's definitely later.
Okay. It's definitely later. And in your opinion, for each of you, does the varnish at present pose significant danger to the paint layer as it, as it currently exists? Or not so much?
Yeah. In this instance, it's really like the, the aesthetic that would change. But at the same time, so the paint layers are safe, safe and sound. And the, the local revarnishing actually will give it more depth and saturation as well. And I think there are real benefits sometimes, and I think this is the case, with waiting to do like a full-blown treatment because I don't think at this point in time it's necessary.
Okay. Linnea?
Um, your question was.
My question is, does the, does the polyurethane varnish as it exists now pose any danger to the paint layer?
No. I think its presence and the presence of the repainting of those sections means that you're not going to be able to fully consolidate the areas that are lifting underneath.
Sure. Sure.
Yeah. But I don't think that it's going to cleave off or pull the paint off with it. But, yeah.
I think.
It's more of an aesthetic thing.
Camilla, you disagree that there's, that that's the case?
No. I disagree with that a consolidation of areas that are currently displaying flaking is not possible because you can, even if it's, if it's varnished very beautifully to the extent consolidate, that it would have basically the same outcome as if it was unvarnished. In some, some areas that are present, I feel like the paint layer, but also the varnish layer has enough flexibility in order to regain plenary. And then, you know, you introduce your adhesive, you basically retouch the, the little lifting flake or whatever. And then you can heat set that without actually impairing the, the, the varnish in this instance. And I think that it doesn't, I mean, it's maybe a little bit harder to introduce your, your adhesive, but I think that the outcome would be very similar or the same if you want. I mean, nothing's ever the same. So, that doesn't exist.
I, I do have a painting in my studio now that we're consolidating that has polyurethane, and it, it does, it has made it more challenging than if we had removed it. But.
Okay. Well, I think, I think the lesson we've learned is don't varnish your paintings with polyurethane.
No. Or spray varnish.
No. But in all seriousness, thank you guys so much. I, I really do appreciate your time. Clearly, both of you have put a lot of thought into, into how we can help keep this painting in beautiful shape for, for years to come. And so, I'm sure we'll have a robust discussion about that later. But in the meantime, if there are no other questions from the board, I think we can thank you for your time and let you go. So, thank you so much for being here with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right. So, we're gonna move on now at this point to item four, which is our consent calendar. And I'm just gonna take a quick look and make sure no public comment has come in or anything looks like we're good. If anything does come in, obviously, we can always address it as it arises. So, for anybody tuning in, please feel free to comment anytime, and we'll, we'll hear it whenever we can. So, on our consent calendar, as per usual, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second. And then we can pull out for discussion any items that we'd like to address. So, if I could at this time, please have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Thank you so much. So, at this point, we'll do a little bit of discussion and pull out any items from the consent calendar that you guys would like to highlight. Anybody have anything they'd like to discuss in particular?
I'll go ahead and, and start, I guess. So, I, I guess for me, and just so I'm not jumping ahead here, Katie, the consent calendar is just the different director reports, right?
Correct. It's departmental reports. Yeah. So, that's gonna extend through. Correct. It's departmental reports. Yeah, so that's gonna extend through page, uh, twenty-one of your package. And then after that, we have the director's report and we'll we'll hear that from Nikki a little bit later on.
Okay. Um, so I think a couple of things for me. One, and I think this is a theme that goes throughout all of the departmental reports, but just, you know, really impressive how much our 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 staff have been able to engage with the community, considering that both facilities are are the buildings themselves at least are closed. You know, I can't even imagine how much work it took to, uh, distribute over, you know, twenty-seven hundred items through curbside pickup is just a huge amount of work. And especially when it's something new, so and and a huge congratulations to everybody for making that all happen and and keeping our libraries as relevant as ever. I really appreciated the the report on the Bob Lucas branch and the sharing of that story from from one of the participants in the English language learning program. And I think for me, it 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 hits on so many pieces of of immigrant story, right? Because it really breaks down a lot of assumptions that people tend to make. Uh, you know, you have somebody who came here with a very advanced degree and the only thing holding them back is is language and our libraries are are helping overcome that. I just think that's amazing. And then lastly, uh, I didn't want to be the first person to touch on this, but, um, you know, the Stella's report and and having to see at the end that it's gonna be our our last report uh, from Stella. And, you know, I think the entire community owes a huge amount of gratitude and and debt to Stella, you know, for stepping in at some of our most tumultuous times as the acting director and and showing leadership through all of that, um, and helping transition to an interim director and then a new director and all the work that she did with all of us that were new board members as well. Um, I just really, really want to thank her for for her dedication and for sticking with us through all of that and and wish her her best of luck.
Here, here. Thank you so much. Other comments or questions or observations that anybody's like to make?
Well, I will, this is Terry. I will, uh, certainly echo Jason's comments regarding Stella. That was really a yeoman's effort to step into that mess and keep the keep the rudder, the rudder steady at the library. She did just a terrific job. We told her that over and over again, but now especially poignant time to tell her again, we really did appreciate that. And then I just, the overall quality of the reports or the, I should say, the quality, they're all well-written and so on. But there's a certain exuberance about them all that, uh, it surprises me a little bit, given what, uh, must be, you know, trying time for the the everyday employees at the library. Everybody's, you can tell, still excited about what they're doing and what they're going to do. So it comes through. I just really wanted to mention that to the whole group that prepared these reports.
Absolutely. Any other observations or comments? Okay. Um, yeah, I'd certainly like to to echo Jason's observation and and convey our very heartfelt thanks to Stella. We certainly will miss her and I know are deeply grateful for all of her service, all of her help and creativity during some very turbulent times at the library and and I know that that contribution has helped us to get to where we are today. So thank you so much for that. And of course, thank you to all the staff for their outstanding work in what continues to be a very challenging set of circumstances. I think I'm probably not alone in hearing consistent feedback from people all over town, you know, granted virtually, but still that, you know, they've been so impressed with the way that the library is stepping up to provide services during this pandemic. And and I know that everybody on staff is continuing to think about how to do that in even more expanded and creative ways despite the restrictions we have. So thank you to everybody for continuing to be really interested and smart and creative on that front.
Really quickly, I will say, um, I I've been in a deep hole since the pandemic, but I was actually really surprised at the level of activity in reading the reports that I had no idea was going on in the library. So as you mentioned that, I did want to say that I'm really impressed by all of the things that are being done even during this pandemic.
Absolutely. Okay, so at this point, we'll go ahead and take a vote to approve the consent calendar. So the motion's been made and seconded. So we'll take a roll call vote to approve. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Welkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me. So the consent calendar is approved. That brings us into section six, our various reports. And I believe I'm correct in saying that we don't have reports from either the Friends or the Foundation at this time. Nikki, is that correct?
That is correct. Um, I've been in in communication with Marnie, who's the new president of the Friends, as well as Bridget. The Foundation Board met last night, so she's intending to send us an update that will be included in the uh, July twenty-seventh package. So we'll have an update from them, um, later this month.
Yeah.
We are, we did have a meeting not as long ago, so I think that was part of it. So
Yeah.
We'll have updates for you later in the month. So if you want, I'll go ahead and do my report.
Please. Yeah, absolutely.
So good evening, everyone. Uh, just wanted to give a quick overview of some of the highlights from my report this month. I am really excited to announce that we've hired Natalia Romo. She's going to be our new administrative assistant, replacing Kylan Chaney, who left us in May. She has a really strong background in government agency work, um, and has volunteer coordinating. So she's going to also be our volunteer coordinator for the system, working as a a close liaison to the Foundation and the Friends. So we're really excited. Hopefully, I'll introduce you guys virtually to her on July twenty-seventh. So we're really excited to bring her on board. Um, I did also want to mention that tomorrow is Stella's last day with Altadena Library District. We again thank her so much for her over three and a half years of service through some really tough times, uh, in the past and all of her work to keep things moving forward in a positive direction. We wish her so much luck in her future adventures. I know she's looking to get out of LA and into a more rural, laid-back environment. So, um, I wish her luck finding happiness in another position and wish her the best and told her to stay in touch. I'm always looking for a place to go visit that I haven't been before, so we'll see. Um, okay, so let's see here. I did want to mention that we had a really great professional development day on July second. We brought the staff together in the morning and we had a prepared handout for people to come in and talk about like ways that our system is doing well, our management team and our specific departments, as well as ways that, um, the staff think that we can improve solutions to our problems. And then in the afternoon, we broke out into six different groups. Half of the groups worked on an internal, uh, either service priority or a project or initiative. And then three of the groups did one on an external service or, um, program. Two of the external groups actually proposed mobile service, which is something we're actually looking into right now. Getting basically what we're calling a third library on wheels. We've been putting some grants out, grant applications out to be able to fund that. I think this is especially relevant right now when we're gonna, when we're only being able to offer remote service to some extent. So I'll continue updating the board on that, but I was really excited that two out of our six groups are ready, are on, like, in this mode of that's what we need to be doing is getting out in the community and being more present than we already are. So our development day was really great. I got emails from some of the staff saying that it was restorative and cathartic and motivating and positive. And overall, I think it went really, really well. Big thanks to Meiling, Chloe and Nicole, who helped me plan the date. We decided not to hire anybody and I think it was a good move. It was a really good day overall. So wanted to update the board on that. Uh, I also wanted to highlight some of the partnerships of note of lately. Um, as I have mentioned before, we're working with the Pasadena Literary Alliance. Thanks to Katie Clark for connecting us with that group. They have a wealth of access to really big-name authors and, um, the most recent video that's was posted on our YouTube page, which I would encourage all of you to check out, is Les Klinger interviewing Lee Goldberg and Nicholas Meyer. Um, again, they're such interesting conversations. They're about an hour long. We're getting like so many views. And I do want to also point out, and Jason mentioned this last month, that we have like well over a hundred videos on our YouTube page and are constantly getting, um, views because of that. One of our part-time staff members, Mark Parsons, worked with Mitch Horowitz and, um, put together another YouTube program called Awakened Mind, How Thoughts Become Reality. This was actually made possible too because of a a grant that we have through the California State Library to support our mental health initiative. So if you haven't checked out that video, I again would encourage you to look at it. And I think I was told that just in the first day it posted, we had over six hundred views. I guess Mitch has a big following. So again, I've gotten through about half of it. It's about an hour and a half long, but really interesting stuff. And again, please check out our, um, YouTube page. Uh, again, another push, if you haven't filled out the census, please do so. We worked with, um, Altadena Town Council, specifically the more undercounted areas of Altadena to create some signs. It is in my packet, in my report on page twenty of the package, that we we printed them in English and in Spanish, just again, encouraging people that haven't been counted yet to to go online and get counted. So, uh, as of right now, we're at seventy-point-three percent, which is almost ten percent above the national average. And just so, um, for people that don't know, the final response rate in twenty-ten was seventy-four percent. So we're really close to already achieving that. So again, of course, we want a hundred percent, but spread the word that people have until the end of October to fill out the census. And we really want those numbers so that we can get federal funding for the next decade. Um, let's see. So, uh, as you can see from the last part of my, uh, report, that we continue to see that our online resources are being used more and more. I'm really excited about switching over to Cloud Library back in February. You'd think like we knew this was coming or something. It was really good timing. We've had over twenty-five thousand circulations in Cloud Library since mid-March. It's it's just amazing. And then bringing on Hoopla and all of the other resources that we're promoting, I'm really excited about that. And it really feels like money well spent, because people are finding them and using them, which is important. And I think we'll continue to see that even after we open the doors. Um, and to echo what, uh, some of the board members mentioned, congrats to our staff for serving over a thousand patrons since we started offering curbside pickup on May twentieth. I'm also excited to announce that at this point, as I'm sure you guys have seen the numbers in LA County, we don't anticipate opening the door, the doors to the public anytime soon. So really what I'm trying to do with the staff is focus on how we can expand curbside service to meet even more needs in the community. So just last week, Christopher launched people being able to submit three-D printing, um, three-D printer, uh, requests. So they send the design to him, he prints them out and they pick them up up through curbside. I think the other day he told me he already had like between twelve and fifteen orders that came in. So it's definitely something people were missing. Uh, we're also bringing on a different, uh, printing release software called Printeron, so that patrons will be able to send in computer printout jobs, pay online, and then pick those up through curbside as well. Because I I don't know about you, but I buy a printer, the toner runs out and then I just like kind of give up on it. So, um, I think a lot of people will take advantage of being able to get printouts. I'm also working right now with Christopher to develop the policy around the Library of Things, specifically around laptops and mobile hotspots. One of the big reasons we wanted to open the doors to the public was for people that don't have access to computers or internet. So we really think that we'll be able to meet that need, at least by checking out the technology that people need. Thus, this week, I believe Christopher told me we got twenty-four new mobile hotspots in. So he's working on getting those deployed out as well. So again, I don't foresee us opening right now. It says on the website, April third, but I I feel like that date's gonna get pushed back. But again, we're just gonna continue to find creative ways to meet the needs of the community, even if we can't necessarily let them in the building. Uh, and I think that's, that's all I have for tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thanks, Nikki. Um, any questions?
Yeah, I I've got one and, uh, it's about the last topic, Nikki, that you spoke about. And that's the mobile hotspots and the connectivity that people can get at the library. I've been reading articles and, you know, kind of keeping track of what's happening with school districts and they are gonna be, for the most part, at least locally, gonna be, uh, doing virtual classrooms and so on. And then hearing a little bit more about a gap that's developing between families that can't get computer, uh, computers, I guess, or computer hotspots, whatever you want to call them. And I just wonder if there's any kind of talk with you and, uh, anybody that might be alive with the school PUSD about ways that the Altadena Library might be able to, uh, you know, host kids working on computers to try to get their homework done. Or is that already happening? I just don't know.
You know what? It's really an interesting question because just yesterday I had a phone call with the Director of Operations and one of the board members of Odyssey Charter Schools, the the ones that are in Altadena and Pasadena. And they have been trying to get mobile hotspots since May. Um, so I connected them with Christopher because, you know, Christopher, he finds, if there's a will, there's a way for sure with him. So, um, I'm hoping that that connection will, they'll be able to get some, but then also like there's, they had no idea about all the things that we were offering through the library. So it did like provoke me to think we need to connect with more of the local schools so that that they're aware of that. And if nothing else, we could, um, be a distribution point as well. Maybe it's not necessarily that they're utilizing our materials or our technology, but that we can help hand out or facilitate some of that, you know, getting people what they need, whether it's our stuff or not. But yeah, it's, it hasn't happened yet, but I, it, the conversations I had this week definitely provoked me to to move forward on that. And you know what? You made me think of one other thing I forgot. Right now, we're partnering with Altadena Town Council, who's doing an Altadena Voices art project. Um, so basically, like, surrounding the issues with social injustice that are going on, we had a conversation with Billy Malone, who's the the Chair of the Council and Veronica Jones. And we're actually the distribution point for the art project. What it is, is they're like, I think like three to five-inch canvases that the community can come pick up. They can write, paint, draw, whatever they want to do to their canvas. And then they'll be dropping them back off at the library for the, I think it's like the last week of July. So I did want to to promote that as well. And those can be picked up at the main library during our curbside hours, which again is Monday through Saturday, eleven to one and three-thirty to five-thirty. I I meant to tell you guys that. I forgot.
That that's terrific. And, you know, one of the things I think you're doing and and your staff are doing real well right now, Nikki, is sort of reaching out to other institutions in Altadena. I don't recall the relationship between the town council and the library being as strong and as sort of integrated as it is right now forever. And, you know, to the extent we could help schools out and become a vital part of what they're doing, it'll just help us, you know, put down more roots in the community. So thanks for that.
Yep, happy to do it. It's been good to build these relationships.
Great. Other questions for Nikki? Okay. Very cool. Well, thank you so much, Nikki. I know, um, we'll be back to you at various points throughout the rest of the night. But just as a little preview, um, what I'd like to do is move through our financial report with Nicole and our first three committee reports, which I think we probably will have either non-existent or very brief reports, and then take a quick, like, five-minute recess before we get into the public funding report, because that's gonna go a little bit longer. So I want to give us a little break at that point. Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Great. Okay, perfect. Um, financial reports. Nicole, you're up.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm here. I can turn my video on or leave it off. Totally up to you guys.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, I'll leave it off.
Okay.
Okay, um, so these are the financial reports for May of twenty-twenty. Currently, that puts us at ninety-one-point-six percent of our budget year. And as indicated on this report, as usual, actual year-to-date expenditures are exceeding year-to-date revenue. Um, but that will be the case until we receive our first major property tax installment from the county in December. So expect to see that, that negative figure until then. The total cash with the county stands just over three million dollars. And that does satisfy our requirement to have our fifty percent operating expenses held in reserves. So we're still doing good there. And then total assets are at about five-point-five million. Uh, some, a little bit of property tax revenue collected in May, that usually happens, you know, due to the the second payment that happens. And then we did get five thousand dollars in credit card rebates in May. Expenditure highlights, we do have a progress payment to Coffin Associates of fifteen thousand dollars for the class and comp study. And then a hundred and five dollars spent on recruitment to advertise for the new administrative assistants. And we did get a candidate that we're really excited about. So money well spent. Any questions about any of the financial reports?
Nicole, this is Jason. Go ahead, Terry.
No, you go, you go.
Okay. I just had a quick question. Just because I think it might be somewhat relevant to the next presentation, and I've never noticed this before. But under profit and losses, because I don't want to make any assumptions, line 4050, homeowner's exemption, can you just explain what that is?
Um, you know what? I have a cheat sheet on property taxes somewhere. Let me pull that up really quick.
It's page 25.
While Nicole's looking, I'm gonna guess, as I play along at home, that that would be an LA County thing rather than exemptions for our per parcel. But I, just because of the way that that is structured, but could very well be wrong.
Yes, I was able to find my notes. So the homeowner's exemption provides a reduction in taxable value for a qualifying owner occupied home. The home must have been the principal place of residence of the owner on the lien date, January 1st. To claim the exemption, the homeowner must make a one-time filing of a simple form with the county assessor where the property is located. So it is possible for newer homeowners to claim that exemption. That's what that credit is.
It sounds like, yeah, Katie, that's a county thing.
It's a county thing. I will say, and this is something that we'll kind of come to in a little bit, but we do have, and I know we've had some discussions throughout this, this CFD formation process about how to make it better known to folks. But we do have as part of our per parcel existing Measure A funding, a low-income exemption that is part of that. And I believe, you know, that's something that's been in existence since, since the last last levy in 2014. And I think it's really important for people to know that, just in case the economic conditions of this year, you know, have put people in a different position. We want to make sure they know how to apply for and receive that exemption, because it is really important that that word gets out. That's not directly a question for you, Nicole, more of a, more of a comment. Other questions for, other questions for Nicole. Terry, you had something, please.
Yeah, just a couple of things. And Camila, I'm gonna give you a little, some guideposts here and tell me if I'm, you know, mansplaining or whatever. But I'm looking now at page 20, 28 of 122. And if you're anything like me, I had a really tough time when I first came to the board, understanding what's on these, all these pages with the numbers and so on. So I'm looking right now at page 28 of 122. And when you go up and you see a category number 4930 under other revenue and adjustment. My question to Nicole on this is, that's money that's budgeted as a drawdown, right? Nicole coming up from, transferring from reserves. And is that something that you would typically take next month or as needed? How would that work out?
It fluctuates month to month, kind of depending on where we're at in spending. You know, so we budget a certain amount, what we anticipate we will need to transfer in at the beginning of each fiscal year. So that number changes kind of month to month, depending on where we are with our expenditures. It often goes down, which is good, because we usually end up underspending throughout the year. So that number, you'll usually see it a little bit higher. I think for this fiscal year, we budgeted close to, I think it ended up being like 140 that we wanted to transfer in from reserves. But depending on how much we actually spend, that number will go down throughout the year.
Okay. So you'll adjust that as needed then, basically?
Yes.
And then another follow-up thing, this has been, I realize this has been always on my mind, and I never get the question asked. If you look on that same page up under income for donations and grants, you'll see California Library, Literacy Services, and then the Cal State Library Grant. And it came to mind because Diana Long made a notation in her report about the projections for next year under the California State Library for Continued Literacy Funding. So I guess my question is, is one of those sort of a, one of those line items doesn't exist anymore? It's been consolidated into one thing now, and that's just like a vestigial, let's say, line 4750, that's just kind of there because it was there in the past? Or is that an actual different, different, separate grant that we are trying to get?
It was, it was a different account. And so they're both funded through the State Library, but one is specifically for Literacy Services. The California State Library Grant, we did use to get every year. Unfortunately, they stopped giving it last calendar year. So we did have it on the budget, but unfortunately, they, they're no longer giving out those funds. So you won't see it on this fiscal year's budget for 2020.
Okay, good. Because if you go even back to last year's financials, you know, last fiscal year, you would see that. Both of them together. So, all right. And then, so Diana, working on this grant or this award from the California State Library, the literacy funding could be as high as 23,461 next year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what we budgeted for. That's what the Literacy Service actually told us they were going to give us. So we're very excited.
All right, good.
Great. Um, any other questions for Nicole? I'd just like to note with great joy that like 7130 of our profit and loss, our legal fees, we are at only 45% of the budget, which means we've come in $58,000, more or less, under budget. So, good job. We budgeted a lot and we didn't use it, and that's great. Love not.
It literally pays to do what you're supposed to do. How about that?
What? It turns out, it turns out it does. Fantastic. Anything else for Nicole before we move on? Okay, thank you so much, Nicole. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us into committee reports. So Terry, anything from the Budget Committee?
No, just thank you for the new calendar that will help us zero down, drill down on the dates that we should have for the one coming up in August. And I think we should probably, with all the moving parts, Katie, I think we should probably address what the date for that might be, maybe in a couple of weeks from now. Okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I would, I would think that probably the second or third week of August would be a smart, probably the second week of August would be a smart time to do it.
Okay.
But we can, yeah, we can, we can figure out the dates on that. I think that's a great, that's a great suggestion. CVRA Committee, no report. And Betsy said there was no report from the District Director Evaluation Process, although you will see her government liaison report a little bit later in the packet. And I will take the liberty of just telling you that she went ahead and voted on our behalf for our CSDA representative, and also took a look at those SDRMA credits that are available to us for continuing ad. The word on the street is, it goes on a specific calendar cycle. So we're now in a new cycle. So between now and March of 2021, all of us need to do some CSDA webinars, so we can save that money on our SDRMA insurance and learn stuff. So she's got the specifics in there. Like I said, that's a little bit later in there, but I'm going to go ahead and talk about it now, which is on page, excuse me, sorry. On page 71. So she gives us the breakdown on how to do it and the rationale for voting the way she did. So thank you to Betsy and Absham Shah. Okay, at this point, I'd like to go ahead and take a five-minute recess before we come back and hit our Public Funding Committee Report and the remaining action items on our agenda. So we will take a quick recess at 7:01 PM and we'll come back at 7:06. Okay, if everybody is more or less ready.
Katie, I'm getting a message that the host is not allowing me to start my video.
Oh, well, you know, you should have thought about that. I don't know. There we go.
Cool.
All right, perfect. So we are back. It is 7:08 PM. And this brings us into item number 6E3, our Public Funding Committee Report. And that report and the other documentation appears beginning on page 36 of your board package. So I'm going to talk very briefly to sort of give us a high-level overview about what we're going to talk about today. There is no action on anything, but this is more in the nature of a report on where things stand. So as you guys know, we are in the process of assessing feasibility for a potential future ballot measure. And we've gone about that a number of different ways. And we've had a number of different consultants who are helping us with that, everything from, you know, rate and method of apportionment, to how we get there, to doing some public opinion research that we'll hear about a little bit later on today, to a series of structured outreach conversations to folks around town to get some qualitative feedback as well. And all of this wraps together to try and help us answer that feasibility question. So I think at this point, it would be helpful to have a sense of what our timeline and decision-making process will be to help contextualize the information we're going to hear tonight. So as all of us know, the reason we're doing our special meeting tonight and moving all of our monthly business to the 16th is so that we can devote all of our time at our regular meeting on July 27th to basically a town hall, right? A public hearing on exactly the questions that we're considering. So those questions are, you know, does it make sense to look to a ballot measure to solve our capital and services needs? If so, does the proposed ballot measure that we've more or less come up with in terms of its structure make sense? Does it look like the support is going to be there for that kind of ballot measure? Does it make sense to go to our voters in November of 2020 or some future date? All of those questions sort of revolve around our assessment of feasibility. So when we get together on the 27th, again, we're not going to be making any decisions. We're going to be listening, we're going to be asking for feedback, and we're going to have a more structured final report about the results of those, we're calling opinion leader conversations, basically outreach conversations. And, you know, we're undertaking those with folks around town, with the town council this coming Monday. Nikki and I are going to sit down with them, with the foundation, with the friends. So we're really trying to get as many opinions as we possibly can. And you'll hear about some of those mechanisms a little bit later tonight. What'll happen after that is we will then have another special meeting on August 3rd, so the following Monday. And that special meeting will be the moment when we actually do need to make a decision about whether or not to move forward and call for an election in November. So that will give everybody time, you know, we'll have a whole week to think about everything, process it, really take in what we've heard back from people, and then make a decision. And as you guys know, the filing deadline for that November election is August 7th, which is why we have to kind of make all of this happen in the timeframe before that. So that's, that's sort of where we are. Tonight is an opportunity for us to hear where we are in this feasibility process and to hear some of the, some of the information and some of the structure around where that process is right now. And like I said, we'll have a fuller iteration of that when we reconvene on July 27th. So with that, I'd like to ask Laura Crotty, who's here with us from Clifford Moss, to go ahead and come on and give us a little update from her end.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay with my audio? Great. Okay, so I'm going to Great. Okay, so I'm going to share a short presentation tonight that we put together in collaboration with the ad hoc committee and the district leadership to summarize the program and facility needs that the district has. And this document and presentation can be used in stakeholder meetings leading up to the final decision that the board has to take to collect and receive more feedback from your community. So you all probably know this like the back of your hand. So this is really for us to be very transparent and open with the community about the public engagement process. So I will go through this in a, in a try to be brief because again, I think I will be covering information that you know as well. So I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, so this is all about Altadena Library Needs and Solutions. And as you all know, the Altadena Library District brings together people and ideas for an Altadena that is learning, growing and thriving together. You've done a lot of work over the past few years in your strategic planning for kignectness and being good neighbors and listening to some of your earlier board discussion really speaks to that. And we'll see a little bit about that later today as well. So even during these challenging times, you are still providing an essential service to your community with curbside pickup, with a robust online collection, support services and more. And hearing about sort of partnering with local schools also is a great, another, just another great example. So there's a lot of different ways that the library from established in the early 1900s is providing an essential community service. So the main library was built in 1967 by a local and noted architect. And it is three levels. And the Bob Lucas Memorial Branch Library and Literacy Center was built in 1957. And it's a single story building. Because planning is a priority and facilities are needed that support quality library services and equitable access, a comprehensive architectural survey was conducted with both expert and community input in 2018. And both of these documents are available for further in-depth reading at altadinalibrary.org. So both the main library and the Bob Lucas Memorial Branch were built over 60 years ago and are in desperate need of repairs and improvements. So due to age, safety and accessibility standards, the libraries really need a replacement of leaky roofs, improved access for seniors, people with disabilities and strollers, unupgraded outdated plumbing, heating and air conditioning, just to name a few. Again, the, the comprehensive full list of facilities needs and the assessments are available at altadinallibrary.org. And so part, as part of these, this assessment process and as part of your strategic planning process, multiple town halls and community engagement listening sessions were conducted. And some of the themes from the community input included agreement that universal access for all is important, along with private and additional programming, private spaces and additional programming and event spaces. So the assessment survey and input resulted in concept plans for both libraries. So this is the main library concept plan that has lots of different red numbers pointing out different upgrades and facilities assessments that are needed. I'll just name a few of them. So the numbered areas point out entrances where accessibility for all upgrades are needed, replacing the outdated leaky roof and code compliant ladders, accessibility for all with a dual side elevator and an updated fire alarm system, including smoke detectors, strobes and wiring. And the same concept plan was also completed for the Bob Lucas Branch. And again, the red numbers are many, but I will just highlight a few. The numbered areas point out replacing the outdated leaky roof, accessibility for all, including power operated exterior doors at the reading courts, an updated fire alarm system, including smoke detectors, strobes and wiring, and replacing outdated HVAC, electrical and plumbing. And again, the comprehensive list of needs, which are greater than what I'm showing today, are available at altadinallibrary.org. So we also know, as you all mentioned earlier in your meeting, that there are mobile and remote access needs that could be addressed with additional, Altadena Libraries on Wheels or Altadena on Wheels. And so that's another key component that came up in the listening process back when you did it in 2018. And it continues to be a community conversation. As the libraries are an essential community resource, continued programs and services are critical. It is important to keep the libraries safe and clean, maintain hours, continue essential programs and provide up to date print and online materials. And when we did some initial community listening, we also see that this is some of the feedback that was received in the strategic planning effort. And so that's just a summary of the needs. And so as part of this listening process, before important decisions are made by you, the board, as to whether or not to place a measure on the ballot to address your critical needs, stakeholder conversations are happening. An online survey has been posted where we're asking anyone from the community to please respond with comments and questions and their opinion. And there is also, of course, a ask for any and all to attend the public hearing on July 27th to express their opinion to you, the board, so that you can be fully informed to make a decision that first week of August. And that concludes the roadshow document that's available for use with stakeholders. And this last slide has been updated, so it will be available in full form on altadinallibrary.org.
Perfect. Thank you, Laura. I want to give the rest of the board an opportunity to ask any questions they might have. We've got another presentation in just a minute from our friends at EMC. But while we've got Laura here, does anybody have any questions or comments for her? We'll have another opportunity at the conclusion of this little section, but just in case there's anything right away. Okay, very good. Well, Laura, thank you so much. I hope you'll stick around with us because I'm sure we'll come back to some of these ideas. And thank you so much for sharing that. I'd like to now move into the second presentation that we've got here. And I believe Andy Morehouse from EMC Polling is going to be with us. As you guys know, we undertook some opinion, some public opinion research. And, oh, Emily's here as well. Hi. And we've got Emily Goodman as well, both from EMC. And they're going to join us to talk through the results of some of that research.
Wonderful. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Andy Morehouse. I'm with EMC Research. I'm here with my colleague Emily Goodman. We recently conducted a survey of likely voters, really looking at testing the feasibility of a potential community facilities district revenue measure. Going to share my screen right now so I can walk through some of the results of the survey. All right. Can everyone see this? Is anyone unable to? Okay, perfect. So I'm going to talk really quickly, just here on a quick note on methodology, the current environment that we're in, some big picture key findings takeaway from the survey. And I'm going to go much more specifically into the details, so really digging into the data. And then I'll wrap it all up. And of course, happy to be available for any questions that may come up at the end. So just a quick note here on the methodology for the survey. Again, this is a survey of likely November 2020 voters within the district. We did a mixed mode survey, so both telephone and online. What that means is we did live telephone interviews with, using landlines and cell phones. We also sent email and text message invitations to voters to allow them to complete the survey online, really maximizing that outreach and ensuring that we have a representative sample of what we expect to be likely November voters. We conducted the interviews back in late June, early July. We yielded 604 total interviews, which will give us an overall margin of error of plus or minus 4.0 percentage points. So on all the overall data you see there, we'll have that little bubble of margin of error. We also conducted this using a split sample methodology, which means that half of these 604 respondents heard a one potential, one possible ballot scenario, which is a seven cent per square foot tax rate and an 11 million bond limit, which you'll see a little bit more detail on this later. So half of respondents saw that measure exclusively and separately throughout the survey. And the other half of respondents saw a 10 cent per square foot rate with a $24 million bond limit separately and exclusively throughout the survey. So we could really test any potential differences there in support. Just a quick note here on context and timing. Obviously, we're living in very unprecedented times. You know, there's a global pandemic going on. COVID-19 is definitely top of mind. Many sectors of the economy were shut down with shelter in place orders starting back in March, which continued through is the interview period for this survey. We were starting to see some parts of the economy reopening, but many people getting sick, dying, and millions of people throughout the nation filing for unemployment. There were also a lot of protests and demonstrations, not just in LA County, but nationally in response to police brutality. And of course, voter opinion, voter sentiment is always, can always be affected by the greater environment, the greater political environment as well. So keeping in mind that survey responses here may have an effect on that due to that greater environment. And of course, poll results are always just a snapshot of opinion and time. But moving into this, the survey here, the big picture key findings takeaway. What we're seeing here is that the district is viewed very positively by many voters in the district, particularly by those who report themselves as being frequent visitors of the library. We're also seeing that voters recognize and need for additional funding and also generally show a willingness to invest in libraries of value in the local libraries. Speaking specifically about the Community Facilities District Revenue Measure, we're seeing support today hovering at that two thirds threshold required to pass with no statistical difference between the two rate and bond limits that we saw tested in the two different possible ballot scenarios. We are seeing that additional information really helps to solidify support, increase support for a potential CFD revenue measure with voters ultimately placing very high importance on projects that really would help with the needed upgrades and repairs for local libraries and ultimately prevent local library closures. So looking at the data a little bit more specifically here, we ask this very general question right up front. Do you feel that things in Altadena are generally going in the right direction? Or do you feel that things have gotten pretty seriously off on the wrong track? Really big general question here. We use this as a gauge to better understand the lens to which voters are kind of viewing things generally. Are they feeling pretty optimistic, pessimistic? This is an important data point here for us. And we're actually seeing a large number of voters, 60% feeling pretty optimistic about how things are going in Altadena. We also asked respondents to think pre-COVID-19, pre-shelter-in-place times. How often were you visiting local Altadena libraries? And we actually see a pretty high number here, 35% of likely voters visiting local libraries at least a few times a month, an additional 25% a few times a year. So a pretty large number of your likely voter population really engaging with the local libraries. We also wanted to see more specifically how voters are perceiving the district. So you see the, the statements here that we post on the left, the job, the Altadena Library District is doing kind of overall and the quality of programs and services at the local Altadena libraries. And you see a lot of blue on this slide, a lot of excellent, good ratings. Over half, nearly two thirds giving positive ratings for the district here. This is that same question here, the job Altadena Library District is doing just generally overall. You see that 66% at the top of everyone, all likely voters, giving either an excellent or good response to this. And I wanted to show this by how frequently voters were reporting visiting libraries. And you see there's a direct, very strong correlation here between the frequency of visiting, really the familiarity with the libraries to these positive ratings that they have of how the district is doing. We also wanted to see how are voters perceiving the physical conditions of the library? So you see here at the top, so the physical condition of the Altadena Main Library, generally very positive sentiment here with 68% rating the physical condition of the main library as either excellent or good, but a very large gap in awareness when we're looking at the Bob Lucas Branch, right? So lots of gray on that slide, about half of voters unable to give a rating here. So much more familiarity with the, the main, the physical condition of the main library than the Bob Lucas Branch. Also, thinking very generally, we asked voters if they thought local Altadena libraries have a need for additional funding. And you see here, 64% responded that they see at least some need generally for additional funding. Among that, 26% saying a great need. So pretty wide awareness here of the need for additional funding, just under two thirds at 64%. Also wanted to show the same question by how frequently voters were visiting the library. And again, you see here that voters who are visiting the library more frequently, at least monthly, 76% of these voters say that they see at least some need for additional funding for the local libraries. And then those who are visiting less frequently just showing higher unawareness of the need for additional funding. A quick note here on tax sentiment. You see on the left, we posed these different statements as agree, disagree statements. And what this is telling us here is that we're seeing some aversion to taxes generally. So 44% of likely voters saying that they agree that taxes are already high enough and that they'll vote against any increase in taxes. However, when we tie that to the library specifically, you see at the top, it's crucial to have high quality local public libraries, even if it means raising taxes. Huge value here. So 75% of voters actually agree with this statement. So really showing the value in the libraries, even if it is mean raising taxes. There's also a high level of trust that we're seeing among voters for the ability of the district to manage tax dollars properly. 66% of voters specifically actually agreeing with this statement. So some tax aversion generally, but when we associate it with the libraries, we're seeing a high level of willingness and also general trust in the district. So looking more specifically here at the potential Community Facility District Revenue Measure, we posed a draft 75-word statement here that could potentially appear on the ballot. This is written here in the gray box at the top. So the measure to upgrade, repair local Altadena libraries, improve access for seniors, people with disabilities, increase space for use programs, continue with literacy programs, maintain current library hours by authorizing the district levy and then either seven or 10 cents, depending on which sample they saw. And again, half saw the seven, half saw the 10 cents with a 11 million or $24 million bonding limit. Of course, requiring oversight audits, exemptions for those with low income and all funds staying local. So on an initial read with no additional information, you see on the left, the respondents who saw the seven cent per square foot rate and the $11 million bond limit. And on the right, you see the 10 cent rate and $24 million bond limit. And ultimately, no difference here between the two different measures that we tested and support coming in today right at that two thirds threshold, so 66%. We also had an additional four or five percent say they lean yes. What this means is that when we asked this question, they were initially undecided. They said, I don't really know. And then we prompted them, you know, well, do you lean towards voting yes or voting no? And they said that they would lean towards voting yes. Also today, we have about a quarter saying that they would not support this measure. So really ultimately hovering right at that threshold today. So really ultimately hovering right at that threshold today. We also wanted to look at some different potential projects that a measure could fund, projects and programs. We presented a list to respondents randomly. I have here on this slide showing ranked in order of percent total important to be included in a measure, in a revenue measure, to make sure that we're really addressing this. So top importance for voters. And you see this, this list here, really important to many, at least about 80% of voters. But rising to the top, replacing the leaky roofs, keeping libraries clean, safe and well maintained and preventing library closures. But ultimately, lots of important projects for voters here to be included. We also simulated some things that people could potentially say in support of a potential measure and also against a potential measure. And you see here, and then once we presented that information, we re-asked them now that you've given everything that you've heard, this information and support or information potentially said against, how would you vote today? And you see this progression here for both samples. So that seven cent per square foot rate on the left and 10 cent per square foot rate on the right. So what this is saying here is that we started at that initial support level, right at that two thirds threshold. But then after respondents were exposed to additional information, really focusing on the potential outcomes and benefits of a measure, we see that support increased up into the mid 70s. And then some, some slight impact here, of course, from opposition as well, that dropping support down. So some fluctuation here as voters learn more in either direction. So summing this all up, again, we're seeing definitely a value among voters for the local libraries. We're seeing a recognition of need for additional funding for the libraries, as well as over half showing trust in the district to manage tax dollars. Really support today hovering at that two thirds threshold. However, when we present additional information, when we explain the benefits and outcomes of a potential measure and the revenue that comes along with that, we're seeing support increase and solidify. So despite it being ultimately impossible to really predict future mood and really understanding the volatile times that we're in with, you know, things changing in the environment daily, we think that in the right environment, which means a robust privately well-funded campaign effort, really making sure that there's a communication to local voters on the potential benefits here of a measure. We do think, and also getting ahead of any, you know, potential negativity in the environment. We think that community facilities district revenue measure for the Altadena Library District could be feasible for the November 2020 ballot.
Thanks so much, Andy. I'm sure that everybody has a ton of questions. And I will say, just before we jump into those, that, you know, we're very grateful to EMC for all their hard work on this. And we did, in our work as a subcommittee, also spend a lot of time on this data, really taking a super deep dive into some of those specifics and the edges and the ups and downs and yeses and no's. So there's, there's a wealth of information. And this, of course, is a pretty, a pretty high level summary, but it is very robust. And the, the data, I think it's fair to say is very rigorous and very strong. So just by way of context. At this point, I'd love to open it up for questions or comments or discussion or just thoughts from the rest of the board. Oh, Terry, I think you're muted still.
Sorry, that was a great, a great report. And thanks very much for that. And a question that I have is related to the slide right before the conclusion slide. They showed those three graphs in a row. I want to make sure I completely understand what's going on there. And I don't know if you need to get it back up. That'd be great, because I can follow along too.
Yeah, I pull it back up. Can you see it now?
Yeah, I can see it now. And so what happens is we work our way from the far left going to the right, that people say yes to a sample A to the, at the rate of 66% and then no at 24%. But then after you educate them a little bit, that changes to 75% and 21%. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay. And what, what exactly did that, that education comprise when you talk to them on the phone? Just, they really need it or everything's falling apart? How did you get them to change their, their vote on that?
Yeah, definitely. That's a, that's a great question. So we did a series of different messaging, really focusing on, yeah, the needs of the library, current conditions, potential benefits and outcomes, programs and projects that could be funded with revenue from a facilities revenue measure. You know, also talking very generally about how great a resource the library is to the community, the strict oversight and accountability provisions that would be included, the requirements that funds would stay local and be used for the local libraries, things along those lines.
Okay. And then the final part of the question is, I'm not sure I understand after opposition that, that drops down. What does that represent again?
So this is after we presented, we kind of simulated some potential things that could be said against a measure. And then after respondents heard those, those bits of information, we asked, now, given everything you've heard, how would you support? And we do see a little bit of a drop in support after potential messages against a measure.
Okay. And this is the same group of respondents each time, right? There's a continuum that each one of them, not specifically, I guess, we're answering these questions after they heard the information.
Correct.
Okay. And then my follow-up question real quick, and I'll yield the floor here. What I, you may have said it, but it may have been in here, but the, my copy of the slides got cut off a little bit. How did you pick the people whom you interviewed? And were they representative in geographically all over the Altadena? How did you do that part?
Yes, absolutely. So we took, we took what we expect to be voters that would turn out in a likely November 2020 election based on past vote history and also included new registrants who haven't had a chance to vote in past elections as well. Then we took a random sample of those voters, and that's who we did our outreach and contact to. And we did some initial calls, additional, initial invitations via email and text message. And then we also did some reminders and follow-up to make sure that we were really doing our due diligence and, and not just taking the, the first folks to respond. And so that random sample is what's really helping us to ensure that we have representative responses in this survey data set. We also, you know, watch very closely and monitor some of the different demographics. One of them that you mentioned is geography representation as we're collecting the data and ensuring that we have the same demographic makeup of the respondents in this data set as to what we would expect to turn out for a likely November election. So between the random sampling and ensuring that, that match of demographics, that's how we make sure that we have a robust representative.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Other questions, comments, observations?
Can I go again?
You can go as many times as you like, Terry.
And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up.
Do it, do it. We can always say no if it's not.
This is a kind of a pivot point for me about all this. And that is that, you know, is the, when we do this is really a big item for me. And it's something we're going to discuss. But I guess the general question in your experience is, how many times do we get to, do we get to try this? In other words, if we swing and we miss on this one, do we come back six months later? And is there any data that says, well, your chances of going down because you're repeating the, the ask is, you know, hurting you? Is there any data that said, okay, you, you got one shot at this or you got two shots at this, whatever it might be? Anything that you know of on that?
I think I, yeah, I'd love to hear from EMC and also from Laura on this, on this question, because I think you guys both have a lot to say there.
Yeah, in fact, I'd actually like to yield this one to Laura.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So we, we don't have any specific data on that. But first of all, what I would tell you is that our strong recommendation is to go once with all the resources you need and do it right. So our strong recommendation is to go and do, do it at the right time, with the right environment and with the right support, independent support, right? So that's step one. In terms of what it might look like afterwards, we have seen some come back after needing to try it again, learning, taking lessons learned and going back. Usually it's not right away, but it does take a little bit of time to come back. But again, what we like to do is take this time now, before important decisions are made, to, to choose that exact right time and do it right and do it once.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was a good answer.
So I want to just talk a little bit about other ongoing outreach and listening efforts. And maybe Laura, you could speak to that a little bit. Maybe you can talk a little bit about the survey that I know just, just went up and what we're hoping to, to hear from that.
Right. So as, as part of this, our, our mode right now is no decisions have been made. We're listening and that final decision is made on August 3rd by you, the board, as to whether or not to place a measure on the ballot. So our goal right now, working with the ad hoc committee and Nikki's leadership, is to do as much listening as we can. So we did some initial with some great other leaders, did some initial interviews with opinion leaders. And now that we have these poll results, we are expanding that to stakeholder conversations as well as working with the communications side of the library district to have a comprehensive webpage that has not only all the facilities, survey assessment, architectural survey, the strategic plan, photos of all of your needs, as well as all of these documents, anything around the CFD to this, so that we can make sure that the community has access to all the documentation and then a series of ways to reach out to as many as possible. So today, an email went out to ask the community to respond. And I was actually, I, I'll tell you, I've never seen this before. The survey went out and with that, within five hours, you had like 80 responses already. So even without reading the responses, just to see the number of people that immediately want to share and care about the libraries is really illuminating. So what we want to do is keep getting that survey out there. So we're going to work with the core team to provide you as board members with a JPEG and content, so you can post it on your social media pages to ask people to take the survey. And we also want to make sure that we bring all that listening data back to you as a board. So with all the listening that we're doing, we want to give you the numbers of how many people were listened to, the comments, questions and concerns that came out of that listening process, as well as the themes that are coming out of that listening process. And so I'll just repeat, I think Katie mentioned briefly earlier, that our goal is to bring a summary of all the listening that's being accomplished now and up to July 27th, at the July 27th public hearing, so that you can again, as a board, be fully informed on what is your community saying about your needs and this potential solution.
Yeah. And I, I think, you know, it's, it's important to add to that, that each of these sort of gives us a different lens, right? And, and the more lenses we have, the, the more informed a decision we can make. Because, you know, the, the piece from EMC that we've seen today is basically a sample profile of what a likely November electorate would look like, right? So based on geography, on age, race, voter breakdown, like all of those things represent a, a, a sample of what we are likely to expect in November. Folks responding to this survey are a self-selecting group, right? It's people who say, oh, I've got something to say on this. So, and, and all of that is really important, right? So we want to remember like the sources that this data comes from and also, you know, what lens it gives us on, on this question, because I think all those perspectives are really important. And I would just say, you know, to the rest of the board, I would really encourage you to please, you know, reach out to people in your neighborhood, in your circle, on your email lists, like everybody that's sort of in your, in your range in Altadena and, and ask them to fill out that survey and share their thoughts with us. Because the more feedback we can get, the better. And, and certainly, you know, encourage them to attend that, that July 27th meeting as well. But certainly, we want to get as, as robust a response as we can.
Katie, I just wanted to make a couple comments, not so many questions. You know, I just want to really commend the work of the, of the committee and, and the, and the Laura and the rest of the team who've been helping on this for, for all the outreach, it's already been done, as well as kind of helping us plan for additional outreach. I know, you know, when most, when, when most of the folks on the board, when we, when we all came on the board, you know, I think there was a consensus around increased transparency, accountability and really a great deal more community engagement before making any serious decisions impacting the libraries, right? You know, we saw that, you know, the leadership that you gave on, on the strategic planning committee and the incredible amount of community engagement there. I think that carried over into the facilities committee and, and the public engagement around that. That really kind of created the foundation for, for some of this specifically. And it's really good to see us continuing on that track, right? Because I think it's absolutely critical that we hear from the community, get feedback and really build whatever decision we do end up making around that feedback and input. So I'm just glad to see this. You know, hopefully the folks that are listening in tonight, encourage them as well, right? To, to fill, you know, have your friends and family and neighbors, right? Fill out the survey and, and if you can, join us on the 27th. And frankly, even again on the, on August 3rd, so we can keep hearing from, from you.
Yeah, yeah. Well said. Laura, go ahead, please.
Can I just add, and if you're a part of any, any group from the community that's listening to this right now, any club or civic group, and you want to convene a, a virtual meeting to hear more about this, please let the district know.
Yeah, we would love to talk to you. We would love to hear from you and we will, we will make that Zoom happen. Any other questions or discussions? And I, I don't, you know, mean to restrict it just to questions. We can certainly have a little bit of a discussion here or, you know, just sort of let us know where your thought process is at. But I do want to take advantage of the expertise that we have from, from Clifford Moss and from EMC while they're with us. We'll have several more swings at this certainly in the coming weeks. Okay, good. Well, I think then we'll leave it there for tonight. A big to be continued on this, but thank you so much to the team from EMC for all your hard work on this, on this public opinion research. And I think it's very helpful to have some quantitative evidence to look at as we move into, you know, thinking about what decision-making needs to happen in the next couple of weeks. It's very, very helpful to abstract it from just, you know, anecdotes or kind of gut feelings. So thank you for that. All right. And thank you so much to Laura and the entire team at Clifford Moss for all of your, all of your help, your strategy, your insight as we continue through this, through this process. We really appreciate everything you're doing.
Katie, can we just do a quick check and make sure that no comments came in like?
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it. Let's do it. I have been keeping an eye out and I don't see anything. Nothing in the chat? Okay.
Or on the YouTube. Well, wait a minute. Bridgette made a comment on the YouTube page that says, important to mention that personal calls were not only to those we thought would be positive. We are talking with those who ask challenging questions and offer historic perspective.
That's a really good point, Bridgette. Thank you. That's exactly right. We're trying to get, like I said, as many lenses as possible. And that's not just people who are longtime fans of the library and what we're doing, but people who are, you know. not always, not always first in that fan club. And I think that's really important, because this is something that's going to affect everybody. So we've got to hear from everybody.
That's all I see.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Good, good, good idea, Jason. I appreciate it. Okay, so I think at that point, we'll leave this, we'll leave this piece here. Just a reminder that again, we've got no decisions on anything on this tonight, no decisions on this or anything related to the CFD on the 27th. We will be putting all of those various resolutions that would need to happen in order to, like, form the CFD, call for an election, all of that stuff will be at that special meeting on August 3rd. So we'll, we'll vote on everything at that point. So up until then, question remains open. And again, just please encourage everybody to take that survey and submit their thoughts and their comments, because we'd love to hear them. That brings us to our trustee reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say or report on at this point?
I do.
Oh, do it. Yeah, go for it. Go for it.
So mostly, I've got a, an action email from the American Library, I'm not getting that right, the National Library Association. And there's a, a bill in Congress right now, it's been introduced by Reed of Rhode Island and Levin of Michigan. It's called the Library Stabilization Fund Act. This is $2 billion that would be distributed through the Museum and Library Services Institute federally, that public libraries could apply for money because of lost revenue as a result of the pandemic. I know because of, you know, our funding, we haven't been hit particularly hard yet, luckily, but many other libraries have, both very close by and across the country. So I would encourage folks in our area to call our Congresswoman Judy Chu, as well as both Senators Feinstein and Harris, and encourage them to support this act, the Library Stabilization Fund Act. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Any other trustee reports?
Nothing for me.
Okay, great. Camila, anything from you? Okay. Just as a little PSA, Jason and I tomorrow, that's Friday, the 17th at 11:00 AM, are going to be doing a public information session on how to run for office. So for anybody who is an interested candidate for our Board of Trustees this coming November, or for any other local office, this will be applicable. We'll go through all the ins and outs of how you form a committee and file your 460s, and what that looks like, and how you don't get in trouble with the Secretary of State for messing it up, have to pay fine. It is not the most user-friendly system in the world, as I think all of us who've been through an election can attest. So our hope is that we can make that a little bit easier for people as they come at this process anew. So that will be, like I said, tomorrow at 11:00 AM on Zoom. But we're also going to make sure it gets recorded and posted on that Run for Office page. So if anybody ever says, you know, I'm really thinking about it, you can send them to that Run for Office page from the library. And I think there's a ton of good information there. So that should be a fun time. If you really get excited about campaign finance reporting, do not miss it. Nobody gets excited about that. Okay. Section eight, we have no unfinished business, so we come down to our new business. So our first item is to review and approve the master calendar for our fiscal year 2020, 2021. And that appears on page 73 of your board package. This is something that we do every year. And it really just helps us keep on track, so that we know kind of what's coming up month over month. It gives us a standard set of things, because there are things that as a public agency, we have to do every year at the same time. So this is the proposed calendar. It's pretty standard. I don't think there are any major changes from our previous operating procedure. No, I don't think so. Nikki, is there anything major that's different?
No, this was pulled from what was used in the past. The only thing that we did add was, you guys voted last year to do employee recognition, so we included that in December. So that's really only a change of note.
Right, got it. Perfect. Okay, so this is pretty, pretty straight ahead. Basically, we just need a motion to review and approve the master calendar. So if I could ask for that motion?
I move that we approve the calendar.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Perfect. Moved and seconded. So before we move on to a vote, any discussion or questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing done, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capell.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson?
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me, so that is good to go. Very good. All right, item 8B, review and approve additional consulting services for NBS. So this appears beginning on page 74 of your package. And either Nikki or Nicole, could you just briefly talk about why we're looking at this?
So this is Nicole, and I'm happy to speak to that.
Thanks.
So NBS has done some initial work for us to determine feasibility. They were working with Clifford Moss and both EMC on that, doing data collection, some cost estimating, polling and outreach coordination. So since we had decided to kind of, you know, move ahead with the feasibility part, they now are asking for this contract to do additional work, which includes determining our district boundaries, performing some rate modeling, determining the rate and method of apportionment, district mapping, and then just preparing a report and participating in any public hearings. So this is going to have to be signed in order for their participation at the July 27th meeting. And I, I think we definitely want them there for that. And so a breakdown of their cost proposal is included in their consulting agreement, which is attached to this report. It's not to exceed $14,050.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this before we move into a motion and a second? I will say, having watched the sausage being made in the world of CFD formation, we absolutely want as much expert help as we can, because this is not a simple process. And making sure all of these things are done correctly is, is critical. And I think, you know, NBS has done a great job so far, and so. Yeah.
I, I just wonder if we're, if it's putting the, you know, cart before the horse a little bit in terms of timing, since we haven't really, you know, voted this or got sort of fully approved it. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do this at all. I'm just trying to get my arms around the, you know, what it is we're going to be paying for. We don't owe them, we, we, they've done as much work as they're going to do for now, and we paid them for that, is that right? I'm, I'm wondering if I'm misunderstanding this in a fundamental way.
They have performed a lot of service for us already that we, that we have paid for. But in fact, in order to put the measure on the ballot, if we did decide to do that, the CFD would need to be ready to go. So that's kind of where we're at.
So a lot of what they did up to this point was around options, right? Like, you could set it up this way, you could set it up this way, you could set it up this way, and here's our estimate of how that would function. But what they have to do now is actually build the, build the community facilities district, right?
Okay.
And, and that's what this is. So really, what this is, is sort of, I think, preserving options, right? So if we do decide that we want to go forward with November, this would have to be done for us to be able to file, you know, by that August 7th deadline. If we decide that, you know, maybe a longer runway or a different approach makes sense, this won't go bad. Like, none of this work would, would be feasible. We would have to revise it a little bit, but that's mostly in terms of what would happen. I'm not a lawyer, but my, my understanding is, we would have to revise some resolutions, but none of this would, would fundamentally change.
Okay, gotcha. And I guess my key question was, we wouldn't be spending money for something that still could blow up. Nobody ever, nobody knows, you know what I mean? So we wouldn't commit ourselves to a payment stream to them for work that we never, we never did.
No, that's, that's right. That's right.
Okay, gotcha. So that, that's fine with me. I got it, yeah.
That's a really good question.
I think it'd be one thing if we didn't agree that we want to combine and do it as a CFD. But I think now it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So again, like Katie said, we, in order to go in November, we, if that's what we choose to do, or the board chooses to do, it, it has to be ready to go.
But if we go in March or June or whatever, we still are, you know, got the runway clear with this, so. Perfect. You answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Okay, so let's go ahead and get a motion to approve the additional consulting services for NBS. We can do additional discussion after a motion in a second.
So moved.
Oh, wait, so I had, I had a, sorry. So I had a motion from Camila. So Camila moves, and so?
Yes, I move.
Perfect.
I'll second.
Fantastic. All right. So we have a motion and a second. It's, it, you guys, I'm pointing at where you are on my screen, and that has no impact, I'm sure, with reality. But that's, that's how it is. Any other discussion or questions that you guys would like to undertake at this point before we move to a vote? Okay, hearing done, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capell.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me, so that is unanimously approved. Perfect. Okay, we come to the varnish removal section of our agenda. So here we are. We need to make a determination on what we do want to do with this painting. You know, obviously, we heard from, from both conservation experts. Before we get, like, a motion in a second, I'd really like to, to hear some feedback from you guys about sort of what your thoughts are, where you are on this, and let's see if we can kind of work out together what, what makes sense.
Katie, can you, or, or I don't know if it'd be more of a Nicole question. I know that we've gotten a donation to pay for some of this, but I know at some point, we also had discussion about the Friends or the Foundation helping. So can, can we just get an update on where it stands as far as how much money would actually come out of, I guess, general fund or whatever we call it?
I can speak to that. So the Foundation has received two donations. My report says a $10,000 donation, but there is also an additional $1,000 that came in from another anonymous donor. So currently, the Foundation in the bank has $11,000 to go towards this. There has been talk about trying to fundraise more, or the Foundation being willing to pay more towards the restoration. But again, I think we were all waiting to see what these estimates came back at before we explored what else would have to be covered. I mean, as I think you recall, the, the estimate that Linnea gave us last year came in between, she was estimating 15,000 to 18,000. So at the time, you know, when the board had talked about it, it would be making up the difference from that $10,000 donation. But, you know, it just depends on the scope of work. As she had mentioned when Linnea presented, you know, we, we could, like, look at her estimate and see if we want to go a different way that wouldn't cost as much. But that's where we're at right now. So anything beyond the 11,000, we'd either have to try to get more donation from our support groups, or it would have to come out of the general fund.
So I'm just going to jump in here. I don't claim to be an expert on any of this, but I have, you know, at least in my previous life as a historian, at least some experience with museums and conservation and some of this painting restoration stuff. So I, you know, I think, in my opinion, both proposals are completely valid approaches, right? I think one is just much more extensive than the other. So I, you know, Linnea's, Linnea's proposal is, is really the full enchilada. It's everything you might ever want to do to make sure that this painting is conserved and restored to the sort of greatest possible degree. And I think in a world of infinite resources, that would be great. Sadly, that is not the world that I think we live in. And I do think that there's a big unanswered question about the impact of varnish removal. So it's not clear to me that it would make a huge, huge difference. I know she says that she feels like there would be a substantial aesthetic impact. If we were a museum where we were getting, you know, people through the door to specifically come and look at this painting, that, to me, would, would be maybe a more critical argument. Given that it can always be done in the future, and we can always fundraise additional money in order to undertake it, and there's no immediate danger, my impulse would be to take, you know, Camilla's less interventionist approach, preserve the stretcher, preserve everything, you know, adjust the varnish where it's problematic, but not try to strip the whole thing down and, and revarnish it. At this point, I do think it would be worth asking her, however, to maybe do a small test and see what kind of difference it actually does make. Because, you know, if she, if she tests a small area and it, and it's like night and day, then I think that's a reasonable argument to maybe undertake an additional fundraising effort in the future to fund that process. If she does a test and it's like, not that big a deal, I don't know that we want to, you know, devote a ton of time and energy to something that might not make that big a difference. That's, that's sort of my, that's sort of my sense of it. That's where I kind of landed after, after both. I think they're both really good at what they do, and, you know, we both do a tremendous job.
I, I'm in the same boat. I think that the, the, the proposal with the, you know, removing the varnish doesn't really add a lot of impact, and it's just fiscally way more expensive. And it doesn't seem like it's necessary to, you know, protect the painting, you know, make sure that it lasts a long time. So if you take that away, then essentially, you have the same, you know, around the same quote. And so it seems like it would be best to go with the unvarnished, or no, the varnished version versus, you know, taking the varnish away. And like you said, we can always go back and, and do that if necessary.
Terry, Jason, what do you guys think?
Well, I think that the, most of the impact of the restoration will be taking the grime and the dirt off the finish. That's what's going to give it, you know, lustrously life. And I, it would be wonderful to get all the nuance back in it, the way that she talked about, by getting rid of the, the varnishing and so on, and redoing it that way. But I just don't know that the general public is going to make that, you know, they're not going to discern that much from that having been done. One of the reasons also I asked about, to kind of clarify how long it would take, is that it would take six months on that longer, I know is the longer process. But that seemed a little long to me. And one thing that can be done with this painting, as we get it done maybe a little bit more quickly, would be to make it a, you know, a, a really new welcome addition to a, a library that's sort of talking about reforming and rebuilding, it'd be a better sub, subject, rebuilding itself. Just one little step toward the public understanding that we really want to take care of this treasure for the community.
Yeah.
So I, just for timing alone, I would vote for a simpler solution on this.
I do have a public comment from, from Bridgette. She says, "As you make this determination, do you have an idea of the final value of this painting before approving an estimate?" And I will say that I believe we haven't had it appraised in the sense of, like, if we were going to sell it tomorrow, what would it be worth? But I do know, as is mentioned in the staff report, that larger works by this artist have sold in the range of 30,000 to 130,000 dollars. So I think, you know, somewhere in that range is likely. It is a pretty unique subject matter. And so all the information that we've gotten from previous reports from Linnea would be, that it would probably be, and I'm, you know, I'm paraphrasing, that it would be somewhere on the, on the higher end of that range. That's a good question.
And Bridgette also said on YouTube, "It's also critical to remember, we aren't an art museum. The goal is to give proper care to this historic painting."
Yep.
And I do remember at one point, I asked the question about if we need to change anything about the placement or care of it to preserve it. And at the time, the response was, because of where it is, not getting direct sunlight, other than maybe some, I think somebody said, put it as dusting. There's not a whole lot that really needs to be done to, to better care for it as far as placement and that kind of stuff. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm. as far as placement and that kind of stuff. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, let's do what we can as a library to, to show some respect to a local artist. I, I don't know how we would justify the budgetary expense to bring it to museum level quality, if that's the right wording, not even sure.
Yeah. No, I, I, I concur. And, and the, and the good news is, is like, you know, a less interventionist approach means that can always happen in the future, right? And if it turns out that maybe there's a, a better or more suitable home for this painting than in the friend's bookshop, then, you know, that might be something that could be undertaken by, by other folks. And there's nothing that will, there's no downside to, to doing a sort of more conservative approach now. So it sounds like we have a consensus, I think, but do we want to, are we, do you feel like we're ready to go ahead and make a motion to proceed with, um, LA Art Labs? Or would we like to kind of bat it around a little bit more?
I have a question. So does it matter that, um, taking away the varnish, both of them still have a, a proposal on the table for the, I guess, the lesser work? Does that make sense? Like, um, uh, Linnea also had the proposal that she made in 2019. So is it a question of which one of them? Or is it a question of the work that needs to be done? Does that make sense?
That I, I totally get it. Yeah, that's a great question. Because we, um, because we went through this sort of RFP process, we have to make a decision on the two proposals that have been submitted. We could, I suppose, decide not to vote, table it and, and start that process over again and ask them to resubmit. But yeah, I, I think we, we need to go ahead and vote on what we've got in front of us.
I do think one thing you hit me and that is the, uh, the, the issue of the frame. On the one hand, you got someone saying, you know, maybe the frame's not the best thing going and you, covering with plexiglass had a lot of appeal to me as well because that will protect it going forward. So I'm wondering, uh, I know that neither one of them had a proposal in there for reframing them. But, uh, could in this motion, we reserve a little money somehow? Another three or $4,000, an allowance of some sort to reframe it if needed. So that would be, that kind of muddies up the motion, I guess, but that's a thought that came to me.
Um, I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at the list, um, from Camilla, because she did say something about fixing the frame. And I want to look through, sorry.
I think that was about strengthening the.
Yeah, it's about the brackets and stuff. Yeah. That's right.
To stretch the canvas.
Um, I mean, I think we, I think we probably would not be wise to go in and selectively modify the proposals that have been presented to us. But I think if, you know, in future, it turns out that we need to reframe this or put in plexi or put it in a different place, I think that we could easily allocate money to do that at that time. But I think it would be, it would be probably best to, to reserve that for a separate conversation. It's sort of a separate scope of work.
Yeah. All right. Sounds good.
Okay. Then I think, um, it sounds like we've got a consensus. So at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to go ahead and accept and move forward, authorize Nikki to move forward on the proposal from LA Art Labs.
I move.
Okay. Perfect.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing done. We'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Sorry. Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that is unanimously approved. Very good. So thank you so much for that, guys. I think that was a good discussion. And certainly I did not expect to learn as much about polyurethane varnish as we did today, but I'm like, honestly, it was pretty awesome. So I'm pretty pumped about that. So we have, uh, at the end of the packet, we have a little bit of course, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Camila. Oh, you're muted.
Sometimes it lets me click my space bar to temporarily take it off of mute. Um, I also, just as you communicate with her, Nikki, I also did like your suggestion too about the testing, uh, section of it to see what type of varnish it is. Just as she's doing the work, you might as, she could also do that so that in the future, if that needed to happen, we would be well positioned to just go forward with it.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll make sure that gets carried out in the course of the work.
Awesome. 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 And it would be good to have that information documented, right? So that whatever the, the future trajectory of that painting is, at least, you know, whoever the custodians are, whether it's us or anybody else would know. All right. We've got, um, a, we've got a budget that shows up at the end of the packet. Whose budget is that? Is that?
It's LAFCO.
It's LAFCO. Okay. That was my guess, but then I, I, I was, I got nervous. All right. So they send us their budget every so often. We appreciate that. We've included it for your reference. No other correspondence as of right now. Future agenda items. So obviously we've tried to keep the 27th pretty clear. There will be a little bit of business for us to do on the 27th. There are a couple procedural things I think we have to do, if I'm recalling correctly, Nikki, but nothing, nothing really very time consuming. So we should be able to reserve all of the, all the substantial time in that meeting for public discussion and comment.
Yeah, there will just be an agenda item about the notice of election, which comes up on the master calendar every year. I haven't received it yet. I guess there's a bit of a delay, probably due to the closure or whatever with LA County. So once I receive that, it'll go in there. It's just informational though.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Any other proposed future agenda items, um, either for the 27th or a future agenda? Okay. Very good. Um, then unless there's anything else, I think that brings us to the end of our proceedings tonight. So I would, oh, yep. Go ahead.
Do we want to confirm August 3rd? Like that we're going to have that as a meeting date?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we might as well. I'm going to call a special meeting on August 3rd. Um, so we'll do it at 5:00 PM and that'll be, you know, the moment where we ultimately make a determination. Is there anybody here tonight? And we'll check with Betsy, who is not available on August 3rd, because we want to have the full board on this one for sure. So August 3rd is a Monday. It's the Monday following the board meeting. So we would just do our normal, like Monday night, 5:00 PM. But if that's a problem for anybody, um, either let me know now or let me know at your earliest convenience and I'll wait to hear a confirmation from everybody before we call that special meeting officially.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Great. Cool. All right. Perfect. Um, then I think if that's everything. Good. All right. Boom. Done. All right. Wait, you're a second.
I second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any opposition? All right. Hearing none. We are adjourned at 8:20 PM. Thanks so much, everybody. Really appreciate it. Very solid. Yeah. Good to see you all.
Welcome to here.
Woo, woo. Yay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good night.
All right, guys. See you next time.
Bye bye.
Everyone. Have a good night.